We're back in session. We just came out of closed session. I apologize. I would like to report out during closed session, the Board of Trustees voted on a motion by Walter Rulick, seconded by Alonzo Terry, carried by a vote of three to two with Board members Navarro and Vincent voting no that to approve a tentative settlement agreements for special education matter. So Nancy, I voted in favor, so it was the three of us.
Three to.
Yes, I got that. Okay, I just want to make sure. There's a lot to read, so I apologize. OAH case number 2016070703, an amount of 10,000, 2,000 of which is compensatory, 8,000 is legal. OAH case number 2016070266, an amount of 10,000, 2,000 compensatory, 8,000 legal. OAH case number 2016070060, an amount of 11,535 compensatory, 8,000 legal. OAH case number 2016070134, an amount of 10,000, 2,000 compensatory, 8,000 legal. OAH case number 2016070742, an amount of 11,53500 compensatory, 8,000 legal. So without, will you reestablish the form, please?
Good evening. Board member Deborah Vincent?
Here.
Board member Fernando Navarro?
President.
Board member Alonzo Terry?
Here.
Board vice president Walter Rulick?
Here.
Board president Diane Gibson-Grey?
Here. And if we could stand for the pledge. Ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, and just as for all.
Thank you. Your first item for action is the approval of the board minutes. Do I have a motion?
Is it possible to comment on it?
Well, let's get the first and the second.
So.
Call for the question. We have a motion by Ms. Vincent, second by?
Second.
On Mr. Navarro. Call for the question.
Yeah, I'd like to make a clarification on the board minutes.
Page.
Page five, I think.
It goes.
Hold on. Excuse me, page six of eight.
Six, okay.
Top part.
What, line three?
Top line.
Top line?
Yep. It's in line six.
Stephanie Anello stated?
Oh, no, I'm going off of this copy.
Okay, here, would you like to share my stuff?
It's line item 15. I just jumped on this page. Last line there. So resolution, the comment that said, it actually jumps to pages. Fernando Navarro echoed the comment of Deborah Vincent has stated that he does not support the resolution as it does not, as he does not believe the rich should be taxed. That's not a direct quote. What I said was, if the resolution taxes to the top 2%, the 2% vote with their feet, we're the 2% that are left over. So that's the direct quote.
So you'd like to prevent with that correction?
Yes, please.
Hey. Do you have the recording?
Is it in the recordings?
I can.
Yeah.
Prevent on.
Or whatever the verbatim is in the.
There was nothing about feet mentioned. I know that. But I'm just saying it's not the direct quote. I can't quote.
Paraphrasing.
It's not said.
Yeah.
So would you, not to change the record, but to explain the record, would that be sufficient, please?
Yes, that's not, that's not a.
Okay. Does everybody agree?
Yes. Thank you.
So we have a motion in the second, motion by Ms. Vincent, second by Mr. Navarro, with clarification on that one item. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, and all those abstain. Me on vacation. Superintendent's report?
Yeah, I'm going to make this short because I'm so excited to see students here this night, tonight. We had a couple of great events last week. I know most of you were at, all of you were at the Mary Ellen Fellows Award Center where we recognize some of our outstanding teachers. And I want to thank the Antioch Education Foundation for annually putting on this event. It provides not only recognition for our teachers, which they so deserve, but also, they also get money for their classrooms, which is greatly appreciated. And then attended the Teacher of the Year Award Ceremony at the Concord Hilton. And just kind of want to say what a great representative Vicky McGuire from Sutter Elementary was. She was actually one of my son's teachers, and he remembers her fondly, even though he's, I won't tell you his age because then that, you know, you can kind of tell how old I am. So, yes, she was his fifth grade teacher as well. But just two great events that really showcase the caliber of teacher that we have in this district and really employee in general classified as well, so.
Great events. Was a great event. Thank you. Students, who wants to be first?
We have Deer Valley and Dozier Libby here this evening.
Both Ds.
I think we should go alphabetically. Deer Valley?
Deer Valley be first.
You look excited.
And welcome. This is your first day with us, but you'll be with us for quite a bit, so you'll get to know us and we'll get to know you.
Okay. Good evening, Board of Education, members of the community. My name is Sienna Valiegas, and I'm here on behalf of Deer Valley High School. DV's annual Club Rush was held on Thursday, September 22nd and Friday, September 23rd during both lunches. Twenty-three clubs and after-school programs were represented at tables, and students were given the opportunity to learn about the many ways to get more involved on campus. Deer Valley's Homecoming Week is October 3rd through 7th. This year's theme is Pixar. No matter how old you get, you'll always be young at heart. Many activities are planned, including a homecoming rally on Tuesday, October 4th, after school in the south gym, where homecoming candidates will perform their skits. For the first time, we will be hosting a homecoming carnival on Thursday, October 6th, from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. in the House Two parking lot. There will be carnival games, food, music, and lots of fun. And of course, there's our Homecoming Game versus Pittsburgh High on Friday, October 7th. The crowning of this year's king and queen will take place at halftime of the varsity game around 7:45 p.m. We are very excited to welcome our alumni home. Deer Valley hosted the annual AUSD College and Career Fair on Wednesday, September 8th. Over 65 college and community representatives were present, including people from UC, CSU, community colleges, private colleges, and universities and companies. It is estimated that almost 500 AUSD students attended, with over 1,200 people attending altogether. Feedback was positive, and it was a huge success. Deer Valley also hosted the annual U Can HBCU Fair on Tuesday, September 13th. Over 175 DV students attended, along with students from other AUSD high schools and students from surrounding school districts. All attendees came prepared with copies of their transcripts, SAT and ACT scores, letters of recommendation, and personal statements. Of the 104 DV seniors who attended, 44 were offered admission and scholarships totaling over $2.5 million, and eight DV seniors were offered full-ride scholarships on the spot. We are very proud of our college-bound students. Renaissance Week was held September 13th through 16th. We honored all DV students who earned at least a 3.0 GPA or higher during the spring 2016 semester. Students were awarded a variety of prizes throughout the week, with 143 platinum-level students. Those of the 4.0 GPA and above being served a catered breakfast on Friday morning, September 16th. Deer Valley is very proud to have 677 students who achieved at least a 3.0 GPA or higher during the spring of 2016. DV's Biomed Pathway, part of the ACE Academy, has begun the Project Lead the Way third-year class called Medical Interventions. This class has also begun the articulation process with LMC, so students can receive college credit for their work. Students will then participate in a fourth-year capstone research class, whose curriculum is currently being prepared. It will be ready at the beginning of the 2017-2018 school year. The Law and Justice Academy is gearing up for another interesting year. The case for the mock trial competition this year involves human trafficking and false imprisonment, and students are scheduled to attend a tournament in San Mateo this January. The Model United Nations Team is competing at DVC during the first week of November. Everybody is excited about the upcoming election, and that is all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Board of Education and members of the community. My name is Aaron Williams, and I'll be representing Dozier Libby Medical High School. Dozier Libby has had a number of activities in this, the beginning of this school year. One being our annual watermelon eating contest, a water bottle flipping contest. We had Club Rush last week. We have 21 clubs on campus. Cyber High for credit recovery is now on campus. We are currently doing weekly Friday drawings for the care tickets. We had a spiritware competition last week, and seniors won with 96% participation. We have, we had a T4 fundraiser today after school, and we are also hosting our annual Blacklight Dance, which will be on October 7th. Algebra One tutoring after school is now three days a week. AP Calculus students are working one-on-one with algebra students. Mr. Berger House will be analyzing progress report data. He is also focusing on algebra readiness while doing walkthroughs to the classrooms this week. Mr. Berger House, Dr. Shiroka, and our Work-based Learning Coordinator attended the National Academy Foundation Institute in Monterey on Monday and Tuesday. We'll be working on National Academy Foundation certification in the next couple of months. Some upcoming events is our basketball tournament, which will be this Friday, the annual Blacklight Dance, and also the T4 fundraiser that we had this evening. And that is all. Thank you.
You did a good job, too. And you too, you may always leave when you're done because you have homework and we don't. Now we go to individuals to address the board on items not on the agenda from the public. You can read that there. I do hold to a strong three minutes, so we will start the clock when you come in, when you come up to the speaker. Nicole, I have a question. You put public, but you're an employee. Should I do you under public or employees? Employees. Okay, I'm moving there. So the first one is Clarissa Wilson.
Good evening, Board President Diane Gibson-Grey and School Board Trustees. I am Clarissa Wilson, 10th grader at Antioch High School. I am asking for your support as I would be vying for the title of Miss High School America, California, this coming October. I am the only and the first contestant from the Contra Costa County region that has made it to this point of the pageant, which is a state level. I would appreciate it if you all would support me in any way possible, whether that's by giving a donation, putting an advertisement in the pageant book, or by simply showing your support by coming with me to Ontario, California on October 30th, when the final announcement for the winner will be announced. I will continue to speak on my platform, which is encouraging youth involvement in the community. Now is the time that we start encouraging our youth to get out in their communities and to be involved. So please come and support me as I compete for Miss High School America, California, 2017. Thank you.
Good luck. Second is Doma Wilson.
You would have me come after my child.
That's why they came to me.
Make sure you guys start.
Start the clock.
Don't play. Good evening, Board President Gibson-Grey, Board Trustees Rulick, Vincent, Navarro, and Terry. Special thank you to our fabulous superintendent Stephanie Anello for doing an awesome job as our mistress of ceremonies at the Mary Ellen Fellows Dinner that was organized by the Antioch Schools Education Foundation, not AEA. Stephanie, we made an amazing team. To Diane and Alonzo, thank you for arriving on time. I must admit, I thought I was going to have to ask tonight for those trustees that didn't show up or arrived late, that we were going to ask you to reimburse the school district for your ticket money. Just saying. Just to announce, we now have exclusive Golden State Warriors tickets available for sale. These tickets have been made available prior to public sale for our featured Antioch Unified Family Nights. I have a list of all the nights that we will be having games. So if you want a list, please see me, and I will give you that chart. One game in particular, February 1st, we will be hosting our own Antioch Unified Student, Antioch High School 10th grader Clarissa Wilson. I think you might have known her just a little bit. She will be opening the game with singing of the National Anthem. On that night, we will also have students be allowed to be in the fan tunnel, as well as stand with players on both sides, and they play in the Charlotte Hornets, to stand with them as the singing of the National Anthem goes forth. So please, this is our time, Antioch, to make our mark with the Golden State Warriors, and I am really working hard to bring them into the Antioch region. So let's support our Antioch Family Nights. Now, as I continue to echo the district's motto for this school year, "Today's a new day, Antioch." I often think of the song "I Smile." The lyrics are very clear. It says, "Today's a new day, but there is no sunshine. Nothing but clouds, and it's dark in my heart, and it feels like a cold night. Today's a new day. Where are my blue skies? Where is the love and the joy that you promised? You tell me it's all right. See, I almost gave up, but a power that I can't explain fell from heaven like a shower. But you know what? I smile. I smile through the disrespect. I smile through, even when I'm threatened or I'm questioned. Why am I at so many schools setting up parent engagement coffee and donuts? Why? 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 Let's start asking. Let's get involved. Our children need us. Our children depend on us. You are sitting up there as school board trustees. You are elected by people. We have to stand, and our kids are looking at us. We have to be continually to be role models. So yes, I smile. Have a good night."
Thank you. Now we move into public comments by employees. Nicole Sedano.
Since I last came before you regarding Deborah Vincent's disrespectful behavior, I have been approached by a number of people with accounts of more disrespectful behavior by Deborah Vincent. Ms. Vincent was at the Internal Selection Committee for Democratic Endorsement, where she called Mary Rocha too old, too out of touch, and not qualified enough to run for city council. On September 15th, Deborah Vincent was at the Democratic Central Committee, where she called Mary Rocha a racist in front of 70 people, including Mary Rocha herself. I'd like to remind you all that Mary Rocha started her career at this very school board. In Education Code 44811, insults and abuse, it says, "Any parent, guardian, or other person whose conduct disrupts a place where a school employee is in the course of his or her duties is punishable by a fine not exceeding $100 by imprisonment for not more than 10 days or both." With that being said, Deborah Vincent's behavior is extremely detrimental to our district. She has cost the district $3,000 in legal fees because of her behavior. Is this the kind of person that we want serving on our board? You're lucky Mike Burkholder is a candidate in the school board race, because if he wasn't, I would have no doubt in my mind that he would expose your behavior to the community without hesitation. A golden rule to live by, treat people how you want to be treated. That's something we all learned in kindergarten. Perinson has forgotten how to treat people. In the coming weeks, you will formally be informed that a petition for recall will be started. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
District reports. We'll move on. We have none. Public presentations, none. We have a hearing, a public hearing for sufficiency of textbooks and instructional materials. So I am opening the public hearing and ask staff to make an introduction. Who is, yeah, who is doing it?
I'll do it.
So. So nice to say that.
I know, I'm used to looking that way.
Yeah, so the California Education Code and the Williams Valensuela Settlement require school districts to hold a hearing on sufficiency of textbooks and instructional materials at sites throughout the districts. Thus far, principals have submitted documentation that verifies all students have the appropriate materials for use in school and at home. Additionally, the Contra Costa County Office of Education completed a full Williams Settlement inspections at 11 schools throughout the district, and all 11 sites were confirmed to have a sufficiency of textbooks and materials.
Great. Since this is a public hearing, anybody who would like to speak to this matter, please come forward now. Nobody's rushing. I'm assuming nobody wants to say anything. So with that, seeing no one coming forward, thank, I don't thank anybody because they're not here. I am closing the public hearing. We're done with that. Consent calendar. Does anybody have anything they'd like to pull or discuss?
Yeah, I'd like to pull one C.
Is that for discussion or for?
Discussion.
Okay. Anybody else?
Also, can I add that on your, on the dais, Ms. Vincent had asked for the resumes of the individuals that are under the vendor contracts or curriculum and instruction, so you'll find those there.
Thank you.
I'd like to bolt away just for comment.
Two A for comment? Anybody else?
As well. Two A for comment.
Anybody else? Okay, and let's just do it this way. Let's just go ahead and vote on the rest of the items. One, two, and three, excluding one C, excluding two A. Is there a motion for approval?
I motion.
Motion by Mr. Terry?
Second.
Who's first?
Mr. Rulick.
Second by Mr. Rulick. All those in favor say aye. Aye. All those opposed, motion carries five zero. Let's discuss one C. You pulled it first. Yes.
What's the status on our vendor population for this bid? How many vendors do we have for this?
Okay, well, this is a call for bids, so we won't know the number of vendors or the number of bidders until we actually bring it back to the board. We did open bids yesterday, though, for the 1100 wing at Antioch High School, and there was a good pool, six general contractors, so that's a good pool. And so because of the time of the year that this project is bidding, I believe we'll see a lot of bidders show up for this project because it's from the ground up. So they're not going inside a building. This is a brand-new building. So I would, I would expect to see at least the same amount of bidders when it comes back to the board in a couple of months from now.
Are we going outside the box in our bidding process, or we're still using the same process?
This, okay, so this is a formal bidding process. So this is sent to all potential bidders, and whoever's interested, it's normally within the Bay Area, as opposed to the informal bidding process where we have a pool of bidders that we, that we work on. Right.
Okay, good to know.
Do we have an actual timeline for, for when we can expect these projects to be completed?
The 1100 wing should be completed. That's not on the agenda, but it should be completed probably, I'm hearing, May Day, May 5th, or not May 5th, Cinco de Mayo. The cafeteria project is probably a 14-month project, so it's a ways out. Would like to see it turned over during the next school year. I'm a little concerned with that project and that the project shows it starting construction in December. I get very nervous starting a project in December. I don't know, hopefully, we don't have a drought this year, and if we don't, I just, so that project, what I'm saying, might get pushed out a little bit to start in March as opposed to December. About a 12- to 14-month timeline.
Okay, thank you.
Anybody else? So with that, let's just go ahead and approve that one, if you don't mind. Do I have the motion to approve?
So moved.
Motion by Ms. Vincent, second by?
I second.
Mr. Terry? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries five zero. Now we have two A. We had two people pull it. Who was first? It was just one. Okay. No, you said you had a conversation.
Just wanted to comment that at first, when I looked at this, I thought, like, a lot of people probably, is this all about where you put your salad fork, Emily Post? But upon research, it's much more than that. Topics that are covered are public speaking, college readiness, workplace readiness. And according to some statistics from Carnegie Foundation, Harvard, and the Stanford Research Institute, 85% of success can be found to stem from social skills. So more than meets the eye here with this, of course, I think.
I was about 40 before I learned bread and drink, so.
I echo the same thing. I thought, why are we, why is this even on the, but upon reading it, the fact that we can give our students that edge in interviews and in life in general, I think that's, that's awesome, so.
And I think they've been here before, too.
So I want to appreciate the detail provided in this contract and the outline. I like how she laid it out, what site she's going to be at, how many students she's going to see, and how often. So just wanted to say I appreciate that because it's good to have a timeline because often we have the contracts come through, but we don't know when they're on site. So I like this outline. And thanks for the addition of the resume, Stephanie. Thank you.
So with that, do we have approval for the vendor agreement with the school etiquette and decorum?
So moved.
We have a motion by Mr. Fernando, second.
Oops, go ahead.
I gave you the tie last time. I'm giving it to Ms. Vincent. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes five zero. Okay, my appreciation for surrey sealing and striking is growing by leaps and bounds. We do have an action item for notice of completion for the surrey sealing, because I can't say it, and striking at eight school sites. How many Ss is in that word, in that sentence? I don't think we need to have a report. Do we have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Motion by Ms. Vincent?
I second.
That second by Mr. Terry. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes five zero. Now we have items for, could you do me a favor? Could you bring up 9,200 there? Because I don't think we have it in the pack, right?
No.
You could bring it up. I brought it up here, and you guys might want to bring it up on your screens along with. Fernando, you asked to bring it back. You wanted to discuss changes that you wanted to do to it. So let him get it up. You need another picture because I cropped that off Facebook. Okay, there we go. So.
So we were still in the process of reviewing it to see if there's any way we can modify it or put the right language in there where we're not sequestering the board members to have that open access, that listening tour with, with, with our personnel, our employees, our staff. I was just concerned with the, where the recommendation BP 9,200 is, and we were thinking of reviewing it and possibly modifying it.
This is what we're doing tonight. So what, what would you like to change in that?
Well, I, I'm still working on it. My notes aren't ready yet on that, so.
You want to bring it back?
I, I want to bring it back.
We can't discuss it unless, we want to discuss it and then discuss it again. I think we should all be prepared to discuss it.
So I thought we made some changes last time, and I'm not sure when you first brought that to, I thought we'd never made any changes.
No, this is, we talked about that there was some concern with the language. We asked to bring it back for discussion. This is where you bring the language back that you want to change, and then we would move it forward on the action item at the next, probably the next, or the, depending on the agenda. So, but we have to have the conversation here.
I would probably have it tabled for the next, and we would have the language ready by then.
Okay, because you're not ready, right?
No.
Okay.
I think we're all ready to table. Was there a motion to table it to the next meeting? We don't have to do it. Okay, fine. We're good.
Okay, thank you, Nancy.
But the next time we come, we should have the board policy in here, and then we should have suggestions for strikeout or addition, so. So now we move to resolutions for first reading, none. Reading for resolutions for immediate action. We have item number A, Resolution 201617, in support of Proposition 55, Children's Education. I wasn't here last week, last, two weeks ago, but I heard there was more discussion wanted to be had.
Yeah, so I, I think that at the, at the last board meeting, I agreed to send out information to board members, which I've sent to them so they'd have more informed information about Prop 55. And of course, there are many school districts all over the Bay Area supporting this proposition, as it will bring, I understand, close to $4 billion, $3 to $4 billion in additional funds for education. as it will bring, I understand, close to $4 billion, three to four billion in additional funds for education. So I have done my research and I'm fine with it. I've sent that info to other board members and so I don't know where they're at on it. But I'm, I'm ready to vote.
Just a point of protocol, I deleted it because it was sent to all five of us.
Right.
Information like that should come from the superintendent and should be part of the public record. So I didn't read it, but I was already for it. So. Anybody else?
Yeah, I'd like to make a comment. I like, if I can make a plea, if not a passionate plea. They say that there's no such thing as a temporary tax. This is a perfect case study of it. I think, and it's not a far-gone conclusion that all the districts are approving it, some are not. I think this is a betrayal of the taxpayer. We did say it was temporary and we want to bring it back. Maybe I think it's healthy that we live within our means and we do have a quarter of a billion-dollar budget. And sometimes we need to feel that, that sometimes when you kick the can against the wall, that's it. And I would not be in support of it in respect to the taxpayers in our district.
Thank you. Mr. Rulick?
I will be voting for it, but reluctantly. I would have to agree with the Sacramento B that said it's probably the lesser of two evils, lesser of two poisons. Not thrilled by it, even Governor Brown, who first introduced Prop 30, hasn't backed this. He's just sort of taken a backseat to the whole thing and just said, you know, we'll let the public decide. He actually said back when, 2012, he said this would be a temporary tax as far as he could see. Temporary meant temporary. Now we're looking at, it's 12 more years, I can read 12 years, which is hardly temporary. But having said that, I've supported local bonds in the past and I'm certainly not going to want to see the California school system go back to pink slips. But I wish that we could do it differently. I think it's a bit disingenuous and probably not the perfect solution. The San Francisco Chronicle, which is hardly a neoconservative publication, is against this, saying that it isn't the proper solution, that there's better ways, more structural integrity to guarantee baseline funding for schools. That this just is again, patchwork. But having said that, I will reluctantly vote for it.
Mr. Terry?
Also, I appreciate a couple people sent it to me. Also, I read it over and over again. And I went back and forth because, one, I don't like paying taxes in the first place. Second is, when it comes to our kids and our schools, you always want to side with them. So yes, I would vote for it, but I believe, just like Walter just said, it seemed like temporary means long-term these days. It's like, where is the period at the end of the sentence? But we have to do something.
And so the current structure expires in 2017. And so they're just extending this another 12 years. And hopefully by then, we'll have a better structure in place for funding our schools and facilities and everything else we need to educate our students. But for now, this is it. And ultimately, the voters will have to decide. So I'm supporting it for now.
I just want to just add the continuation of last board meeting, the comment that we kind of generalized. When we tax the rich and they leave and they vote with their feet, the stipulation is still the top 2%. And if it's us, the middle class, the top 2%, we get hit. So it's, it's a non-sustainable system and we have to at some time try to live within our means. And because it's, we're seeing the effect. We can't keep going this way. We're, it's a downgrade and we're running out of road. So.
Well, in this case, it's the top 2% with, I don't think many of us in this building are the top 2%.
Not yet.
It is for the students and we all have personal opinions. But sometimes we have to set them aside for what is the best for the students of the district that you're governing. So with that, is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Do we have a motion by Ms. Vincent?
I second.
Second by Mr. Terry. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
Nope.
So we have a motion for, we have a vote of four to one. Okay, we have resolution authorizing provisional internship commit. This is pretty standard. We do it every year, I think, right? Okay. Do you need to say anything? Okay. Any questions or concerns from the board? Is there a motion? No, it's general information. We don't have to do anything. Okay, future agenda items? So sorry, I was already down here. When I get anxious, I want to go home. Resolution, is there a motion to approve that this resolution in 2B?
Motion.
Motion by Mr. Rulick.
Second.
Second by Mr. Navarro. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Passes 5-0 and I'm out of ink. Okay, board policies for second reading, none. Information anticipation of future action. I just pulled his. None. Information items for general information. Oh, this is a nice one. California School Employees Association, Chapter 85, nominates Diane Auburn to be reappointed as a classified employee's appointee to the Personnel Commission. She's been doing this since she retired from us. Any questions that you may have on this?
No.
Okay. Future agenda items from board members. We will move that one, that we, 9,200.
Yeah.
Okay, anything else?
Yeah, I had a concern that was brought to me to see if we can get clarification. I think we moved 400,000 from, from concentration supplemental funds to, for, for the maintenance fund. Yeah. How do we justify that?
Okay, that's not on the agenda.
Well, it's something, something to talk in the future. So.
Or, or you could just ask for clarification from Mr. Leonard.
And see if we can reverse it. So.
What you asking for clarification from?
Yeah.
And then start from there.
Okay.
So I have one thing that, what some of the community members asked for future items on the agenda. And I, you know, obviously told them I didn't know. I'd have to bring it forward. But there's some confusion about who gets to use the AUSD name in the community. And people were concerned that we have double standards about how we let people use the school name and who get to use it. And I thought I'd bring that forward as a, you know, a discussion because I don't have. The logo is the AUSD logo. I understand that when they had that event with the students that did the graduation ceremony, that they were not allowed to use it. But then when they put the forum on, they were allowed to use the logo. So people were confused.
Which forum?
The, the forum, the political forum. Okay, I'm just bringing it forward. I didn't look at the sign. So I just think that something we can look at.
Okay, I'll clarify too. First of all, that's a policy that we have already. And I'm going to recommend that we do the same thing. Check on the policy. And then if you have a concern with it, bring it back. We have a policy on who can use our logo.
And that's a constituent concern. I, you know, we'll have to figure it out. But thank you, Stephanie.
Okay. We had no, we did not exceed our first 30 minutes. Now we have reports from board members relative to memberships, other organizations or district business. I will start this way. Mr. Terry?
None.
Mr. Rulick?
Pass.
I pass. Yay.
I enjoyed greatly the dinner we had at the Mary Ellen Fellows. And I apologize for being late, but I work in the peninsula. And driving from the peninsula up here is an act of Congress half the time. So you can gauge it on your GPS, but then it changes from minute to minute. So.
And we can all say ditto to that one. We enjoyed it.
Ditto to that one. And I just want to congratulate all the teachers and I pass on everything else.
Okay, great. We have regular Board of Education meeting, October 12th and 26th. Do we have a motion to adjourn?
I motion.
Okay, I believe you. Mr. Terry, who was second? Second, Mr. Rulick. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
We are done.